I will.
Oh, yeah. Good, how are you doing?
I did that. I gave him, gave him last.
Thanks. Thanks. Thanks for that.
Thank you.
He didn't even tell you what I bought him for his birthday. It didn't come yet. Hopefully I didn't get scammed. Hopefully it's good.
I think these, these positions are a few hard to find, but if you're gonna be auditioning yourself, you're gonna get, yeah, you're gonna have some protection. I'm sorry. It's just, you know, it'll be permanent forever.
Right.
Okay.
Looks better than what he has now. I've got saltwater, does everything. You can use all the different coils. Yeah, 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 yeah. There it is.
Okay, one short announcement. We did have an executive session Wednesday night, your Ace of Personnel issues, and we're gonna go ahead and, if anybody have a motion to approve the match on the March 23 board meeting. Do we have a second? A second? All those with favorites say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. We're gonna move right on to presentation reports, Mr. Brad, Brad, uh, Public Finance Manager. Thank you for using the microphone so everyone can hear brighter.
Well, good evening. It's great to be back because the last time I was here, we were in the cafeteria in December to talk about the bond refinancing that there was an opportunity for the school district to do. I think we actually went to Finance Committee meeting in the fall, and then we were back to the Board in December. We were hoping to refinance our 2010 bond and save a significant amount of interest during that process. The Board authorized us to go ahead at the beginning of this year. We went out and prepared to get a credit rating, a lot of the offering documents, all the things you need to do to do a bond issue for refinancing. So tonight, for the Board's consideration, you'll have a resolution laying on your agenda to look at refinancing that bond. Before the meeting, I passed out a handout as a yellow cover on it for some of the final pricing we got from the proposals for the underwriting of the bonds. And one of the things they'll come to do is just step through this real quickly. There's page numbers on the bottom right-hand side of your handouts, and the first page is an interest rate chart, because one of the things that when you do a refinancing, you go out into the municipal bond market and then get more up-to-date rates when you pay off your old bonds by achieving a lower interest rate. And this chart basically shows you, if you're looking at the bottom, the trend that rates have been very low for quite some time. I think most of you are probably aware of that, that the market's been quite attractive. One of the nice things that's happened since December is rates have come down even further. So when we were looking and projecting about $297,000 in net savings to the district, about $20,000 a year, and we get to the page later on in the agenda, or later in my presentation, excuse me, you'll see that the savings have grown to a bigger number than that. So that's obviously where we're at. The next several pages are your credit rating report. One of the things that you need to do when you do a bond issue is go to a rating agency and get an independent rating and evaluation, and then they assign a rating to your, to your bonds. This report is, uh, was prepared by Standard and Poor's, and when they went and did an evaluation of the school district, they rated the school district A+ in credit with a very stable outlook. When we go through that process, Caroline really does most of the legwork on that, in terms of answering a lot of questions, providing audit information, budget information. So she goes through a 30 or 45-minute interview with Standard and Poor's, and she did a really good job of getting that credit rating confirmed. As you can imagine, when you have a good credit rating, that is helpful when you sell bonds, because if you have good credit, your interest rate gets lower. So not only did the market cooperate, but the rating process went very well. So those two things dovetail together to give us a little bit better interest rate, which translates to more savings for the school district. Flipping ahead to page number seven, the 2010 bonds that we were refinancing are shown on page seven. Along, some of the bonds were refinanced in 2012, but they were a little bit left outstanding. Notice in column three of that page, the rates on that bond range anywhere from 3 and 3/4 to about 4.8%, which were very good rates in 2010, but in today's market, we think we can do a little bit better. That bond is scheduled to be paid off in June of 2028, and when we look at the refinancing, you'll notice that we didn't extend those payments. They're gonna be paid off on the same amount of time. So flipping ahead to page number nine, you'll notice on page number nine, we did an analysis to show the current bond rates as compared to the old bond rates, and if you look in column four there, the new rates on the bond range from .3% out to 2.88%, okay? So because we replaced those higher rates, or these newer lower rates, if you go to column 11, you'll notice your savings are about $607,000 over time, which is about twice as much as what we were expecting in December. So that's great. The present value is a little over half a million. I know the Finance Committee was curious about that, and I think it was something like 250 at the time, 247, now it's over half a million dollars. You'll see in column 11 that in this budget, you'll save about $68,000, and the next subsequent years, they're somewhere between $35,000 and $40,000 a year in savings until the bond's paid off again in 2028. We're keeping the same term, we're just replacing the higher rates with the lower rates. So that was, you know, we were very, very pleased with those results here today. The, we have updated, if you look at the next page, page 10, there's the sources and uses of funds. As was mentioned before, the meeting, Caroline worked with us, and we collectively as a team make sure we kept the costs as low as possible, which again, the third thing that dovetailed into greater savings. But in the middle of that page, it says the yield of the issue. That's the average interest rate. I told you there was a range of rates, because bonds have different rates based on how far people invest money, but the average was 2.64% on that bond that goes out about 13 years. So that was a very good fixed rate and lot to make with your consideration when you get to that point on the agenda. I believe Mr. Hobbis, your Solicitor slash public counsel, has a resolution for you, that would basically take care of all these things for you in terms of approving the proposal and making this interest rates tonight. So as you can imagine, we're quite pleased to see these results and, you know, these great savings.
Thank you, Brad.
My name is Steve Hobbis. I am public counsel for the district, and I just wanted to clarify that we will have a topic on a resolution, although it's on the agenda for later action. We can review the resolution as part of Mr. Hobbis' presentation, because really what the resolution is, is that all the information that occurred at the settlement date is melted in the food, the bond purchase agreement. So the first page of that resolution provides a summary, you know, it was already identified in 25 pages that make up the resolution. But fundamentally, as you can see, the first third of that summary, empty world.
Sure. Let me know if I need to get even closer. As you can see, we're authorizing the issuance of the general obligation bond, Series of 2015. It's going to be a high profit principal amount of $6,350,000, which is consistent with the bond purchase agreement. And it's in the purpose of currently refunding all of your outstanding general obligation bonds, Series A of 2010, as well as paying the cost of each one. So it's after the general purpose. And it reports with the local government doing debt act in order for any political subdivision to actually prove that it needs to be, an application needs to be filed with DCD, and it needs to be approved by DCD as well. And that's what the resolution is doing, is basically setting forth this process, where we're gonna submit an application to DCD, DCD for approval. And then we can go to the closing, about May 14, 2014. The first two pages provide some background as to the 2010 A bonds, that provides the general background that DC is looking for. You'll start to see the general provision from pages 3, 4, and 5, in which you're actually indicating that you are pledging the full payment tax and powers in order to pay the bonds and the debt service that becomes due in the name of the basis. As you know, it's a general obligation, you're actually pledging the tax and power in order to pay that debt service. You're agreeing that on an annual basis, you will improve the budget of that debt service. You will appropriate and timely pay that debt service before this bond purchase agreement. There is a form of bond that's contained in the resolution that takes up about five pages. That is required by the local government doing debt act. We have to be fast forward to page 19, we sort of start to get into the guts of being approved. You'll see in paragraph six that you're approving the bond purchase agreement with RBC Capital Markets, and the purchase price in this case for the bonds is $6,290,000, excuse me, $75.60, which is basically the principal amount of bonds. And then you take or add or subtract the original issue premium or discount as well as you take out the net interest discount. That's the new prime, that's the purchase price. The next page, we are authorizing insurance policy, and that insurance policy has been provided by Build America, which is, provides additional assurances to your bondholders that debt service will pay on the time of the basis. There will be required a certificate from the underwriter that the cost of that premium is, is made up in the, in the actual debt service savings as a result of those insurance. So there will be a certificate at the end of the closing. Manufacturing and traders trust company is going to be your head agent, maybe your head agent in the past. Like you are making sure that designated these bonds has qualified taxes under obligations. Fundamental representation you may do with respect to that designation, which is the fact that you're not going to issue more than $10 million in catches of bonds during the calendar of 2015. Obviously, Mr. Hobbins has been working with you to ensure that, that we can make that representation and that more than $10 million in 2015. You are approving the plan of refunding that was reviewed with you by PFM. You were appointed Stockman to the public council, PFM as your financial advisor, and agreed to turn your preliminary official statement into your official statement in seven days. Okay. Thank you. Can we, can we discuss, can we hold it until we go to, I don't know, 11 other action items we need to move actually to the board on? If you have any more discussion, I think that feels good for Steve's synopsis over the public on that before public comment period, but we'll go ahead and hold the session on until we actually go. So let's go ahead onto the board builder projects from Lisa Sturridge. Hi, Lisa.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Um, I'm here tonight, I said, um, I'm here tonight because my students were working on a project in our class. One of our standards in third grade is test management. And so in the past, when I have done this project, we've actually done it on the old-fashioned poster boards, paste and cut. But this year, thanks to, I think, administration support from Mrs. Richline and Mrs. Weber, we have been fortunate to have Mrs. Mencer come over to our building and work on keyboarding skills. So our third and our fourth graders actually have started keyboarding, and it has really been phenomenal at our levels. In fact, Mrs. Spencer sometimes tells them that they're doing better than their siblings over here at the middle school, which tends to really get them excited. Discovery Education, this is where this board builder is found, is a service and a, and a resource that Fairfield provides the teachers and the students. So we can get, we can download movies, we can look at film strips, and in fact, we just found out that we can edit some of the movies and film strips that are strips on here, are video clips. They, if they're editable, we can use them in our classroom and then put our own narration upon that, which we did not know about, but we just found out about it. The students were given a rubric. It is a very easy kind of board builder. They, this is a precursor to a, their biography reports. So in a sense, they're doing a report, but they're breaking it apart, and they're doing the graphic design all on this board. For instance, if you press the arrow there, they can even import videos, this is Carson's. They can import videos to show to the class, which they did. In the past, it's taken us about a week to do this. I introduced to this, I introduced this to the kids one day for about a half hour, thinking that Mrs. Mencer and I would work on it the next time, which was the next day. Half my kids were so technology savvy, had gotten, had their project done and were showing the almost finished projects. Most of these projects only took about three days to do because the interest, combined the interest of bugs with, with technology really was exciting for these boys and girls. And they had to have to present it to the class. They, they would have been here tonight, I think some of whom I could have twisted their arms, but it's a big crowd for most of them, so I promised them I would present their posters. But as you can see on the posters, they had to have a picture of their pest. They had to give a description, talk about what part of the animal world they were from. And they also had to tell why, what their impact was. And the main emphasis on this project is to teach the children that we can do other things than just use chemicals to get rid of pests. So we talk about biological ways and cultural ways to get rid of pests without using chemicals. And sometimes we found that chemicals were the only thing that we could use, but it was a very exciting project. It serves a lot of cases. They had a lot of language, grammar, science, and I want to thank the district because this is a really valuable site. It is a site that does, is paid for from our district, and it is very valuable for the teachers at Fairfield. We use them a lot. So thank you. Any questions? I've had someone, my student, oh, I have one of my students in here. He's sitting very quietly, aren't you, Ryan?
Oh, he's fine?
I think he is. I think he's trying to. But we did have a lot of fun, and I had a lot of fun. I think when you see joy out of the students and they're doing something like this, it really does make teaching such a fun thing every day. So thank you.
Ideally, so, thank you. Onto the student representative reports, are Mr. Ford and I here? Okay. So you're doing all of it, right?
Hello.
Hi.
So there's not a whole lot to your report, but there are a few exciting events coming up. Prom is May 1st, and we've been working really hard on this year. This year is a Great Gatsby theme, so there are a lot of twenties-inspired decorations, and we're gonna have the Great Gatsby soundtrack probably playing at the dance. It's very exciting. Tickets are 35 for a single, and 65 for a couple. National Honor Society inductions are also coming up. That would be on April 22nd, probably members. And then sixth grade camp is also coming up, where a lot of high school students get to the counselor's forum, the sixth graders that are going. They can't wait for that, and they actually come back on the day of prom, so that'll be pretty exciting. And then one other very exciting thing is recently the Adams County Arts Council had a recyclable materials art contest, where kids had to make some form of art out of all recyclable materials, and then they were able to enter it in this contest, where it was displayed at the Adams County Arts Council. And I think the elementary had 48 entries this year, high school had three entries. And in all of the elementary school categories, Fairfield won every ribbon possible.
Wow.
And then in the high school category, I actually won Best New World.
Don't leave us celebrating.
Well, I had two people already give a lot of celebration from the elementary, Mrs. Sturgis. Thank you. We're excited about the art projects. And I want to share with you that our Mandala Garden is now blooming. For those of you who may recall, we had the artist residents come to the fall and work with all of our students, but mainly with our fourth graders, to plant a garden in front of our building. It's in a circular shape, and it's divided into different sections, and it is now blooming, so we're very excited that that's happening. Tram in the Classroom is occurring. It's not a new project for Fairfield School District. We have done it in the past at the elementary, and I know the middle school has also done it, but this is why there's work for Tram. We'll soon be releasing the tram at Strawberry Hill, and we want to thank Mr. Joe Whitmore, I'm sorry. Say it again. Mr. Whitmore is going to be working with our students, and he's going to take them on a little field trip across the street to the hatchery that we have. So thank you for that. Mrs. Weber and I are working on the fourth grade transition. It is a time when our fourth graders come over and spend half a day with the fifth grade students and teachers, and they also have lunch and recess over here. And we try to make the transition from elementary to the middle school as smooth as possible, so we're working on that for May. And for those of you who participated in the elementary giant A+ rewards, I'd like to thank you. That has ended, and this year with the giant A+, Fairfield Elementary School will be awarded $983.83, and all that money will go to the playground.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to begin athletically. The middle school track team is having a phenomenal season. Our athletes are beating personal bests, they're breaking school records, and they brought up their first win of the season at the Home of America against York Catholic. So congratulations to the middle school track team. Today, the middle school completed their first day of the PSSA testing, and I want to share a few facts from last year's testing. The Pennsylvania State reports indicate that the middle school has shown significant evidence that the score exceeded the standard for PA academic growth in the area of math, and moderate evidence that the score exceeded the standard for PA academic growth in the area of reading, and will afford to sustain or improve in our student academic growth. This information is provided by the Pennsylvania Valued Added Assessment System. In reviewing last year's, um, the PSSA scores, two of our current middle school students received perfect scores on their PSSA, 2014 PSSAs. That's great. Hayden Sasse received a perfect score in writing, and I just looked and I saw Haley Wagner is here, and he received a perfect score in math. That's great.
Trevor?
Yes.
Trevor, can we add our perfect score for the elementary?
Certainly.
Jackson Seymour got a perfect score in the reading, he aligned the charts.
Thank you, Mr. Hobbins is not here tonight. We're gonna go right on to public comment. First up is, is that Troy Western? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, you're right. Sean Jones.
I want to start by reading a policy to you folks on the board. In the event of a vacancy in the Office of Superintendent of Schools, the following procedure shall be followed. The Board shall met at a preliminary meeting, study policies concerning salary, qualifications, and duties of the superintendent in order to ensure their timeliness. The Board shall select a committee, sit over the top of the entire board, from among its own members, receive expert assistance from outside the school system to make the vacancy known, secure applications, secure credentials of applicants, and present them to the Board for preliminary study. The Board or its consultants shall screen the applicants on the basis of their documents submitted and determine the number of candidates to be interviewed for personal interviews at the expense of the school district. So Friday, I looked at the agenda after I found it was posted, Section 11 of IFC moved to provide public notice of the Board's attention to receive the application of Ms. Garrett Coogler for the position of Superintendent of SA, FASD, and to interview her for that position. Now, to my knowledge, the school board has not posted or made public the vacancy of superintendent, so the only person who's privy to this and able to apply to this would be Ms. Coogler, if I'm not mistaken. I have a couple of concerns about this. Number one, it seems like we're skipping policy or not following the policy. Again, I'm repeating what I've heard, cleaning out where we've never, you have not followed policy. Two meetings ago, you, or several meetings ago, it was admitted to be a public meeting that the school board did not follow the Sunshine Act, and they used personal emails to discuss items with each other. At the last school board meeting, Ms. Coogler, I remember specifically, said that she needed to be replaced because she was retiring in June altogether, the meeting of finding a superintendent. So again, it looks like the school board is doing another backroom, backdoor deal. You know, this is, this is concerning to me, and it's concerning to a lot of people in this community. Things aren't public, things are done behind our backs. You know, we've got Sunshine Act violations, we got policy violations. I'm standing here asking, when is this gonna stop? What are we gonna, are we gonna advertise this position for the school board's superintendent? Because according to your policies, you're supposed to, as a matter of fact, you should advertise the position. To my knowledge, again, it has to be done, maybe I didn't remember it's policy, I don't have applied for the job of superintendent, nor am I qualified, nor am I wanting. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, this needs to stop. If you follow policy, if you follow the law, we need to do, or you need to do, what you were elected to do, and that is not violating the law and racked up legal bills, you spent a lot of money firing a superintendent for the rest of the community, didn't even fire. Thank you. Thank you.
April Carol Valley. A while back, I'd asked a question about the agenda when you were posting policies that were being changed or added. The agenda didn't state what that policy meant or what it was going to be changed to, and those were approved or not approved. Tonight, you have policy forty-two thirty, which is support staff compensation. It doesn't say what you're changing it to, if you're changing it, if you're acing it. Just kind of left the public in question again about what this policy is that you're going to be changing. I'm a volunteer in the school. I take every opportunity that's available to me to help the kids in the elementary school particularly. It's fun, it's rewarding, and community service is really crucial, especially in such a small community where our resources are short. Today was my second time volunteering in our elementary cafeteria. I spent four hours in the cafeteria today, and I didn't sit down once, and I really didn't get to chit chat at all, which is something that I enjoy doing. It was quite the job. From the moment I walked in to the moment I stepped out, my hands were washed numerous times with gloves on, gloves off. I cut celery sticks into small pieces so the little guys could eat them, put them in little cups so they could get served to them easily. I picked grapes off the vine, washed them, got them ready for tomorrow's lunches. What else? Oh, I got to peel some eggs and chop them up for egg salad. I'm sure everybody's gonna love egg salad post-Easter. That's what I believe. But what I can tell you is that the elementary staff cafeteria amazed me. I have not seen such a, excuse the pun, well-oiled machine. Everyone in there is busy doing what they do. I don't know what they're doing, because I was at the scene peeling my eggs and my grapes and whatnot, but they move fast. And I was surprised how quickly four hours went by from the time the kids started lining up for the first lunch. We'd already been there for an hour, but here they come, they come through the line. I did notice that the cash register had had a little hiccup, and they were trying to fix that. There's only one person in the cafeteria that runs that. And so, when it had a hiccup, it seemed like the line with the kiddos would get backed up fairly easily. I really want you to consider replacing the staff that you cut two years ago. Last year, you raised the lunch prices. I'm curious, who takes care of the cafeteria budget and monitors their progress with their funding? I sure hope you can consider adding more staff to the cafeteria, as they do, they are overburdened, even though they run very well.
First, I want to say thank you to all the people who run the school. Even the moms and mothers that I know are working so hard at the risk for education that's coming up. There are many, many, many hours being invested in that program to continue to raise money for our elementary playground. So, thank you to all of them for all the hard work that they continue to do. I also have some concerns. At the last meeting, I noticed again that it seems like there's still not a clear understanding of what executive meetings are to be used for, and maybe I'm wrong. So, if I'm wrong, maybe this solicitor or somebody on the board would like to correct me. But my understanding is that the only things that are gonna be discussed in an executive meeting are personnel issues or legal issues. And even among them, personnel issues would only relate directly to a specific person, say, being written up or let go, but not the discussion of jobs being hired or openings being posted. Those are all supposed to be part of the public comment, public record, which continues to be something that seems to be a problem with this board. And I realized today, I have a question. I don't know if I asked it before, and there's been all kinds of contention that's happened there over the last couple of months. Why don't you know why? Why? What is the end game of the board? What's the end game? Why all the backcourt deals? What are you getting out of this? From what I can tell, all but about three of you will not be sitting there in a year. So, why? Why are you doing what you're doing and making yourself look so badly in this community? I don't want everybody to get along always. I don't expect that. Everybody gets along much more. You get good things out of people coming together, disagreeing, and having a good discussion, but that's not what's happening, is not what is happening on this board. So, I want to know why. To what end? What are you getting out of it? We're all taxpayers in this room, we're all invested in this school district. I don't want my taxes to go up, but I want my kids to have a good education, and I want this to be a great place to live. So, why? I would really like to know why. And, you know, as far as I understand, the district can't even really hire a permanent superintendent at this point in time. I don't understand why there's any point to that. Why not be honest? Why are we still telling lies and secrets? Put it out there. Say what needs to be said. Thank you.
I am here tonight, oh, I hate my pronunciation, I'm a PE teacher, some used to speaking wrongly, in support of Ms. Kuber. A few years ago, an administrative position was filled in-house by the current acting substitute individual. When I questioned Mr. Chang publicly at the board meeting about the process, his response was the current acting had performed excellently in the position, and he felt that person was the best fit for the job. No other interviews were completed, and it was unanimously approved by the School Board at that time. No discussion, everyone put a yes. I think Ms. Kuber is the best, and my children added since my oldest read it, most excellent fit for this job. In my opinion, she has performed excellently in this position. She understands the current board makeup and the immediate issues facing this district. When she took on this job, she immediately addressed issues that had been complained about for years, including transportation and the fifth graders who would leave to middle school. Whether you were happy with the results or not, they were addressed. I love how parent input was the driving force to make one of those decisions. Just a simple positive change of recognizing our building administrators and giving them the opportunity to speak positively about what's going on in their buildings. How awesome was that change? And I know everyone I have spoken to, thanks that that is a wonderful thing. Voting. I have not read through the minutes, so please don't quote me as fact, to see how everyone who's voted, how it has voted the past few months. And I know there is still strife amongst the board members. But as I recall, voting by the board has been completed that evening. I don't recall any tables, and often unanimously, even adding additional positions. There is a plan here planned. You may not agree with that plan, but it's been made available to the public. We now have the opportunity to study, research, and provide input to that plan. For myself and another parent of a junior, she has been working with us, this is Mrs. Kuber, working with us to find the answers and to be flexible, so our students will be able to be dual-enrolled at half next year, along with Mrs. Swift, who I know is who's in the audience. She, Mrs. Kuber, researches and accomplishes things quickly and efficiently. Selfishly, my hope is she will be superintendent next year when my oldest son graduates and still be here when my younger son graduates in 2020. And as far as my younger son is only complaining about Mrs. Kuber in this position, is he doesn't see her enough to get his eye. Thank you.
I'm here tonight, I have, well, one, just as a parent, but two, I have some wonderful women who have been working with the same, same organization, and I've been trying to help them here and there. And a few board meetings ago, we talked about when the last week's school would be and the graduation would be. And it was expressed that the anticipated date would be June 5th. So, of course, I think some administration, I think it was Kuber's, and I'm sure Mr. Founder's, that we went to tell somebody, because we had to make changes based on that anticipated date. And now, we come to the agenda this evening, and it looks like now's when we change the date. And I would just look to the board, to whether the last week's school is June 3rd or not, to see if we can keep June 5th as a date, because there are numerous families traveling far distances to come in for June 5th, because that's what we were anticipating that the date would be. We've also now changed our venue again, because we couldn't use the other venue that we had originally planned, so now we're gonna have to change it yet again if it's on June 3rd. In addition, this is an event that children, you know, well, children, they'll be adults, but I don't know, but basically, wait, this is a safe, it's meant to be a safe alternative for the seniors that are graduating from the school. There's tons of parents that volunteer, and if it's on Wednesday night, it's gonna be very difficult to get volunteers. So, I'm asking that you look at that and see what possibilities we have, or even if it's last week's school on the 3rd, to have graduation on the 5th. Secondly, I've heard before at other meetings that are policies or the ones that are posted on the website are outdated. And I came into awareness of some very serious policies that are outdated, that as of now, and the handbooks that are out there to the parents are completely incorrect. And I'm looking at the board as to what we're doing to update them. We cannot wait to hire outside companies and spend nine thousand dollars to update these policies. They must be updated now, because it's a disservice to the educators that are here, as well as to the parents. If my little girl gets an old rusty pocket knife of her grandfather on the weekend and puts it in her backpack and forgets it and brings it to school, the school policy for Fairfield says that she's gonna be disciplined, she might be suspended, other things might happen. But the PA school council says, if she's in possession of that when she comes to school, she shall be excelled for not less than one year. Nobody knows that. Nobody. That, in our policy, it says the tier four event, tier five is the worst. We have to update these things now. We must do that, because Gettysburg has it right on their website, the level it is that you bring it to school. And Big Woodville has it on there, it's a brand. We, all of these things are outdated, they must be fixed now. I'm just confused as to why we have this solicitor and no, no fudge account, so it's a present seed that we're paying thousands of dollars for, that all our policies are outdated. I don't understand that.
Actually, I should be real easy. I was looking at the agenda item K, and I just wanted to make a request or a suggestion. We've had these before, where policies being revised, and it's passed on what's called the first meeting. And being out here sitting in the public, I have no clue what the policy was, or what it's being changed to, or what you're actually voting on. So, I would like to suggest that possibly you read what you're voting on, so that we read it out loud to us, so that we understand it. And since Stacy didn't mention it, I'd like to mention our science club did go. Is that okay? Our, our science club did go to a run competition this weekend. They took first and third in one of the events, which was playing, we had a little man on a keyboard. And I would like to thank Mr. LeFever for spending your Saturday out there running one of the events for them. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity for our children, and hopefully it'll continue on in this school. So, that's my thinking.
Yeah, thank you, John. Well, let's say just a few quick ones. Thanks to April, Sarah, and Rhonda, who were on the show at the Fairfield Fire Hall here a couple of weeks ago, which started out to be adult civics. And it drew fifty folks, and we got sixteen candidates there, who gave them the opportunity to do a little buy-on why they want to be what they want to be. So, that worked out great. Mrs. Price called me and asked if they'd do fifth grade civics. Probably next week, we'll fit it in the seminar contender. This past weekend, Caroline, Caroline and I went to the Australian weekend. We had the Australian ambassador come up. The twenty-fifth of April was the one-hundredth anniversary of the landing of the Antacs, which was the New England Australian, which was at Gallipoli, which of course was a tragedy. So, we had the American ambassador here, and I brought some artifacts back, challenge the wings, and that's sort of the wish I'm gonna be shooting. After the meeting, I would still like to request a security meeting with the night meeting whenever we can, to go over my concerns on security for the school. I think we should do another civics for parents' class, with the parents bringing the kids along. Like the Fire Hall, if you folks are up for doing it again, I'll try to play it down a bit for the kids, and we'll do it in about an hour, the last of it, probably two hours. I'd like to cover everything from the Declaration of Independence, Constitution, Bill of Rights, the first ten amendments, the Articles of Confederation, and then we do the governance, you know, Fed, three branches, state, three branches, local, three branches. I think all the folks really like to learn about the local, because we don't all understand that ourselves, being one of four Commonwealth citizens. Primer is coming up, as you know, very soon. I went over to the courthouse today, and I acquired the list of all the candidates for the Republican and Democratic tickets for all positions, from commissioners on down. I have that up front, if you want to stop by and see me afterwards, I'll show it to you. And then finally, Mike Hillen at the Gettysburg Journal contacted me. After the primer, he wants to do another debate amongst all the candidates, especially the commissioners. And we will do that in the Fire Hall as soon. So, that'll be before the November election sometime. So, thank you very much.
The last couple is Ryan and Raker and Greg. You don't need to speak? Okay. All right. Well, that concludes all of the public comment. And the committee reports and director comments, I'd like to start out with Karen, if you don't mind, because I think you could answer a lot of those questions that were put forward to us.
As I said all along, graduation, I was working on, moving into school, I was looking at different options, I was waiting on Mother Nature to make up her mind what she was gonna do. I do actually, and I put forward to the board tonight, the recommendation to petition the state to change two of our teacher-in-service days to active days, which would make them student days, which does allow the end of the year to be June 3rd, with the teachers actually coming to school on June 4th and 5th for their service, because they would owe us those two days. It's up to the board if they want to do that. I have petitioned the state, I can withdraw that petition. The board actually wants students to go to school to June 5th and have graduation that night. If you're just asking for graduation to be that night, that's up to the board. And I will say that Mr. McDowell isn't here, and if I went to weigh in, I mean, he was planning on getting there later, so he may want to weigh in, ask him his opinion.
The policy that's listed is for the support staff, and all it does is clarify, as Heather said, many of our policies are very outdated and have been so for the fifteen years I've been here. That policy actually does not address the Affordable Care Act as far as calculating what part-time employees and how that is figured out. So, that is the change. It changes the part-time hours to thirty-five or less hours, or less than thirty-five hours, full-time to thirty-five or more hours, and makes a stipulation as to all part-time employees, their hours will be addressed and calculated based on the Affordable Care Act to determine whether or not they do it, be qualified for those healthcare privileges.
In regards to the policies, Mr. McDowell, we have a question for you then, so I'm glad you just walked at the door. The request has been made by, Heather, can I say?
The request has been made by, Heather, can I say Safe and Sound is making the request?
Safe and Say.
Or Safe and Say, yeah, I'm sorry. They are actually asking that graduation stay on the 5th, even though kids are out. I said the board can do as they choose, but I'm sure they would want to hear your thinking on the process. Evidently, Heather, correct me if I'm wrong, they already have another venue, and they have the parent volunteers and staffing to support the 5th, I'm not sure that they will have that if it's a Wednesday, is that correct?
That's right, and if you had changed it, I understand why they had to change. And I know that we weren't 100% committed to June 5th, but that's what we had, and that's what we had to make a plan during the work. So we changed it to June 5th on that anticipated date, and now it looks like we're gonna have to change it again. In addition to that, we still have a lot of, as I said, family and people coming across the country flying in, and not everybody does that, but we definitely have that. And it's all anticipated around June 5th. So that's, that's the goal, that's the motivation.
So, Mr. McDowell, give you a few minutes to think about it before you weigh in on your, you're welcome. Since you just kicked me sat out, I thought I did you quite sat out. Policies in general, you're right, Heather, they don't match the agendas, and I, you know, we, some of us have been there for a while now, and have had concerns about that, which is one of the reasons why I've pushed as hard as I have to bring PSBA in, to do it, do it right. Those, the priority ones that are part of the agendas will be the first policies ever redone, so that the student agenda books do a need match the school board policy, and you're right, as far as the weapons policy, it should be on the front page, but I hesitate to put it there now, because I know, I agree.
And I appreciate that, and I would just, I guess what I'm wondering, that if, like I said, if I don't respect the president's capital, what do we, what is, what's our solicitor for, and not to keep that stuff, I'm not gonna expect you guys to know, I would never expect you guys to know, you know, even if you're a lawyer, I mean, as far as I can hear that.
And I will say, but Stock and Leader has done, really has done a commendable job of updating us on policies over the 15 years, well, over the time that they've been our solicitor. I will say that the previous solicitor, when I was here, I never received updates. And I'm gonna talk to the special ed room, because that's pretty much what I did for a long time. I never got updates from our previous solicitor when laws were changed for special ed, which happens pretty regularly. That's not true for Stock and Leader, I have not only received all those updates, and those policies are up to date for the most part, because I've been in Florida, and been able to get those changed. Some of our policies are current, but I will say that it's more in the special ed realm because of the fact that they were updated. I will say also that there have been times when there have been recommendations for changes, and that was not brought forth to the board, for whatever reason.
All right, well, and I'm gonna shut up after this, but then what I guess I'm wondering, is if Stock and Leader is bringing it to the board, which is not you, I'm gonna, then I'm concerned as to why the board's not acting on, you know, and so that's not for you to answer, I understand that, but that would be the concern, they are bringing it, and why it's not?
It has not been, Stock and Leader brings it to the administration, the administration brings it or doesn't bring it to the board, so it was not Stock and Leader. I can assure you of that. There was, there are times when policy recommendations were made, and it was, we'll get to it, and unfortunately, we just never got to it. So, you know, that's one of the reasons, PSBA, once PSBA has an intense look, and we have it up to date, then whoever the solicitor is, there will be the expectation that they will be, make sure that as new policies can, need to be redone, then it will be done immediately. To me, that should be part of the contract with that solicitor at that time, that stipulation.
Okay, let's go on to committee reports.
We had a private committee meeting during the night, and one of the things we discussed was our chiller. We had a gentleman come in, called Phil Train, talking with us about chiller during our renewal program, and that consensus on the board, we had not committed, it was our, we make a recommendation to the board, that we are forth with doing the our renewal program, we already put aside $40,000 for some upgrades to chiller. So we are planning on going ahead and doing the panel upgrade. The recommendation of the committee is for 2016, 2017, we're at the 2015, 2016 budget, and we put in $41,000 for, for our renewal program. And then the 2016, 2017 budget, we put another $41,000 aside for our renewal program, and then the 2017 year, we were scheduled to have the chiller rebuilt, or called, come back in the year 2017. Would that be a total of $82,000, which I think Mrs. Cooper actually has that in her five-year plan. Is that actually the two-year, is that the year? It's in the second year. There, to be a total of $117,000, we're going to be spending on that chiller to have it brought up to speed where it needs to be, hopefully it will give us a lot more years of service, and we'll also extend it, like on that, maybe worth another five years. Next thing we talked about, in there was all, was the playground, well, actually, the window, we talked about the window, it was knocked out by a deer. At this point in time, the window's not been replaced yet, right? What's happened is when it was ordered, it was all size, and it's in the back, so now we're ready for a redesign of that.
We just clarified that it was covered in the special?
Yeah, it was covered, it was not automatically, that's correct. And then we also talked about the playground, and the recommendation of the committee to do, we already put aside $10,000 last year for playground upgrades, the recommendation of the committee to put another $10,000 outside for the playground, which would be a total of $20,000 for 2014 and 15, plus the money that the playground committed, our PTO, the rest, and then we're gonna bring it up to, actually, actually, we have another $20,000, not saying, just ten, another $20,000, turn it into $30,000 from the school board, $30,000 from the PTO, and we can start the project. It all went right, fell in line sometime in the summer, when we start the first stage of the playground. Other than that, pretty much what we talked about, we did have, as a committee, over through the playground, elementary, and toward the playground area, people are giving some area where they wanna put the different playground things at, and she has a good plan, she has a good committee to matter, I think, so that's the recommendation of this committee, that the board consider putting that money into the budget for playground. That's all we got, your district.
Thank you, Mr. Burrow. Mr. LeFever, finance.
Following, following the property meeting, we had a finance budget meeting, and one of the, the first subject was property, or the sale of the property. And we did a discussion regarding auction possibilities, and Carolyn's gonna look into that, and give us back some information, be the preference to start with. Next, we talked about a five-year plan, thank you, very happy to hear, I appreciate all the effort you put into it. We've seen quite a bit of progress, never has this school had, when I've been on board, a five-year plan. I know Mark's very pleased with it. And we also have a budget, and I saw that for the first time in front of me here tonight, and it's available, and we'll be up on the website for all to view. The last thing was the discussion of the bonds, probably took a little more time than it needed, but I've seen that you did a very good job, I appreciate that very much, and I see that you took some of the recommendations into consideration. What has been to our benefit is the 10-year rate, which right now is sitting around 1.9, and that compared to where it was when we first discussed bonds, really led to savings. So thank you, Brad, and thank you, Carolyn, for working on this, I think you've done a very good job, very pleased with it. That's all.
Any of the other committee, I know Lomani's not here in policy, did any, any other committees speak, since we're last meeting, know that any other board directors have any comments?
That $10,000 had been committed to the playground last year, and we're going to commit another $10,000. It was my understanding that it was $10,000 last year, and we were going to commit another $20,000. So there's a total of $30,000 from the board going toward the playground project. Thank you.
I did like, I did like one thing out, we did open up to discuss the cell system, unfortunately, we was not able to proceed further on the cell system, because I knew we had someone scheduled to come in and to check out our cell system, and do some testing, or something like that, and the result was disconnected, so they were not able to do their testing, so that we had to postpone that until another day, put them to do that, so we're gonna take another look at the cell systems, once we get the results back from the, from the gentleman that's gonna do the test. Thank you.
And just to clarify, it was disconnected because the bread and system for the music hall was connected, not because it was disconnected, that we could have reconnected, it couldn't reconnect, because it was being set up for the music hall.
Ryan, can you, since we have you now, can you do your building celebration, and any, I know you have plenty of time to think about graduation, so I'm gonna put you on the spot. Come on down.
The graduation, as far as the school, there's not an issue, personally, for me, there is one. My daughter got away except that day, so my services might not, would be difficult to be in two places at one time. So, I mean, I think we can do Friday, but I think my place might be with my daughter at that point, if I'm permitted to do that, so that's a tough thing for me, but, you know, if the, the people want to do the fifth, as far as the school, as far as I can think of, I talked to Mr. Gervier, Mr. Castle, we don't see if we would stop that from happening. So, celebration, I think the biggest celebration that I can talk about is just the continued engagement that the kids have in school, whether it's the recently, that we use for, or the competitions, everybody, so their kids are involved in, or going right before Easter, when we went on a trip to Virginia Tech, and Rona, and J U, getting the kids excited about things beyond our walls, not that we don't wanna be excited about Fairfield, but our time is short, we're here four years, and then when we want, so that's important. And our kids going to Costa Rica with Spanish, our kids taking Spanish, being able to go there, and then our music, being able to go also, so I just, I kinda feel blessed that the kids are just involved in so many things beyond what we're doing here, the regular academics. As I was at a principal's meeting tonight before I got here, I had a like principal's meeting, you know, those are the things that the students remember. They aren't, they aren't gonna remember necessarily doing two plus two in, in the classroom, they're gonna remember the extra things that they ought to participate in, so I'm thankful, one, to the board that we're allowed to provide students with those opportunities. I'm always pleased when students take advantage of those opportunities. Thanks.
Ryan, how many students went on the trip?
Where?
To Costa Rica, is that what you said?
An actual number, I don't know.
Come on down.
Nine.
I think, 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 I think,[1588.23]
Can we hear the pros and cons of one versus, uh, the third or the fifth? As far as ramifications, if we do move it or if we leave it alone? Obviously, uh, participation, um, people want to do it as part of the weekend. Facilities, is Howie here? Howie, can you, uh, help us out? What ramifications might there be if we move the date from the third to the fifth?
Excuse me.
Okay.
The only con would be that people have our principal, which would be unfortunate, but he needs to be where his daughter is graduating.
Now, if we did this, we wouldn't expect the kids to come in on Thursday and Friday with just the graduations date online. Or would we expect the kids? I mean, I, I would not expect the kids to come in for two extra days. So that's part of the discussion as well, does there are options involved with that?
So either what? It's true. Because we can still beg to service things. I maybe days or student days would be cut, just the graduation two days after the last student.
Okay.
So, uh, Brad, this Bruce, this one. Safe and same is supposed to be on, on the evening of graduation?
Yes.
Is it? I, I don't, I understand it. So the conflict right now is, if it's on the third, when will safe and same be?
It has to be the same, it has to be the same night.
So your, your conflict is a new venue and, uh, rescheduling everything?
That, that's right.
Okay.
And it's, it's part of the lack about here is it's got to be nice, but.
What is, uh, Mr. McDowell's role during the presentation of the compliments?
He hands out the compliments, that's what I saw.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Is that aligned? But Mrs. Richman and I am certain to step up to help out Mr. McDowell at this time of graduation.
(laughter)
I would step up.
(laughter)
Well, I, I really think it's important for the students to make this change, only because I think that same and same is extremely important. It really does keep our kids safe and sane. Um, so I'm going to make a motion to move graduations to June 5th. We will miss Mr. McDowell, but I know he will enjoy his daughter's graduation. And Mrs. Weber will be in last standing. I need a second. I'll second it.
Well, wait a minute. And there's also the second part of that is if we have to clarify whether the kids are going to be in on Thursday and Friday or if that's just the graduation date change only and the school year will still remain the same.
I think it's kind of silly to think that your students are going to come along.
Well, I agree that we have to make a motion and, and vote for it correctly. So we can't assume we have to make.
Would you like to add to my motion to allow the students not to have to attend on Thursday and Friday? Would that be a clarification?
Yeah, if you could amend it, can I, because it does affect the teacher dates too. So we still need to know what we're doing with the students as well as what the teachers are going to be expecting.
How do you want me to make this motion alive and glad to do it however?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't.
Too much to go out of my commission. So that it's fit as what you want it to be. To have graduation on the day and students would not have to attend Thursday and Friday, but the teachers, you would have to be here.
Okay.
Students' last day will be June, their graduation will be June. That's right.
Okay.
Would that make a good?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes. Now, because we're, we're substantially revising the motion, we've got to open it back up to public comment. If there isn't a public comment on, on that, uh, before we vote on it, anyone is invited to get up to the microphone and, uh, speak on it. But, uh, we've heard the motion and if no one.
Do you have a second? Could you give a second?
Yes, if you could give a second. Yes. So there's no one to comment. So, yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Scotta?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Stan Meter?
Yes.
And Mr. Hadd.
Yes. Okay. I think we're in the consent. Okay, we're going to move on to other action items.
Could you please type them one at a time?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, uh, other action items, which is, uh, eleven, subpart A. Do we have a motion to approve, as written? Motion, we have a second?
We have a second.
We have a second. Can we do a roll call for discussion? Oh, so do you have any discussion?
I have, uh, policy here written in sixty-four, item three-one. I suggest that somebody be reading this and maybe the boards take this up. Weapons included but not fitted to any firearm, any instrument, archery equipment, martial arts, any item intended to be used as a weapon or looks like a weapon or any instrument capable of effecting harm. I find that exactly very broad. My frankly, just covering up, so I'd like to board direct policy. Okay, so we'll look at this particular, uh, policy section four nine.
Okay, so, Mr. Carr?
Yes.
You want us to take up the policy now?
No, I just want to think about it.
Okay.
Comment eight by.
Okay. So we're, we're going to go ahead with subpart A.
Could somebody read it? Because there weren't enough copies for the agenda, so we don't all have copies.
I asked if somebody could read it because there weren't enough copies for the agenda,
so we don't all, nobody has to go home and.
Sure. Move to approve the recommendation of the board hearing members and the writ adjudication regarding the student discipline hearing held at 2:30 PM on March 25th, 2015 are hereby
Stan Meter?
Yes.
This is Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Bieber?
Yes.
Scotta?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
No.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
And Mr. Hadd.
I'm going to abstain. Okay, we're going to go, uh, to item B, subpart B and eleven, other action items, which is, uh, I'll read it. Move to approve resolution authorizing the incurrence of non-electoral debt by the issuance of general obligation bonds, series of 2015, the aggregate principal amount of six hundred, six million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of currently refunding the district's general obligation bond, series A of 2010. Do we have that motion?
So may.
One second. Any discussion? I had a whole.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Scotta?
Yes.
Mr. Bieber?
Yes.
This is Michael?
Yes.
Stan Meter?
Yes.
Yes. That motion was approved. And that takes us to subpart C, which is move to provide public notice of the board's intention to receive the application of Miss Kugler for the position of superintendent of Fairfield Area School District to be interviewed for that position. Do we have a motion to approve? Wait, did the motion person then do the discussion? One second, okay. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, I would.
Yeah.
First of all, what we're seeing on the agenda right now, we expected to see. There was a, my understanding was that we were going to accept an application from Miss Kugler. There was no discussion about an interim appointment. And by accepting the application, does that bind us to a period of time where that has to be active upon?
No. It does not. Actually, in this case, it really is not, uh, school requirement to actually provide this news, but it was anticipated this, this will be a better way to ensure that at least the public is aware of the process of concern. So this is basically probably notice to the public, uh, that the application is going to be received.
Is this also providing notice that there are going to be any other applications accepted?
No, it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't say anything about that. All it says is we're, we're going to receive Miss Kugler's application.
And you're going to advertise?
It's not being determined as to how that interview process will take place.
Right, it does not. It just basically says that it's, we're going to receive the application.
And interview.
And, and we have not, you, you remember from the meeting that that process is being set up with this solicitor as of now. So we're not, uh, we're not at the point of what discussions or questions are going to be forthcoming on that interview process, only that the application would be received and at some point it would be interview. It does not exclude any other applicants.
How is anyone going to know to apply if we're not even advertising?
I don't think that, uh, at this point, we were giving first, first notice to Miss Kugler in the acting position. And it, we still have that opportunity to receive further applications if we want to do that. But this doesn't exclude anything. All this is, is a public announcement that Miss Kugler has interest in the position and wants to submit an application for the position.
Well, I did a little bit of, uh, research with an attorney here, and I'm under the impression that because she's filling this position till June 30th, and then from June or July 1st, actually from July 1st to June 30th, we actually have a year for this process. And we can appoint an interim superintendent. And I'm, I'm only saying that for Karen's benefit, because I do think Karen's done a nice job. And Stacy, I'm glad you brought up about the administrative position, because Karen was very upset by that at that time. And in all fairness to Karen, I think it would be better to have advertised a superintendent's vacancy and let her put her application in. I'm not opposed to that, but I want it above board. I want it out there, and I think she would feel better. I think Karen would feel better to go through that process, just like everyone else, because I know she was upset by the way that was handled previously also. So that's just all I have to say. We have a gem among us. Two years ago, Mr. Chain recommended to the principals here that a portion of their raise be given to Karen Kugler. No, no, no. A portion of their monies, that they would be increased in salary, be given to Karen Kugler. Is that correct, Karen? Anyway, he wanted to recognize the fact that she did, has done outstanding work in this school. She has integrity, honesty, and a hardworking ethic. And I am absolutely pleased with Karen, and she has shown that thus far. With having a plan, five-year plan, we, as long as I've been here, we have not had a plan. We ran by the seat of our pants.
Did you ever ask anybody else for one? Because she was asking.
I'm not taking questions right now, just making a statement that I certainly support Karen Kugler, and she's among us. She knows the school, she knows the students, she knows you, and you know her, and you know her integrity. Not only that, to bring back Bill Chain.
We can't, we can't, we can't go there.
He has too much character.
Okay. Uh, and is there any further discussion? We had a, we had a motion to accept, to receive an application, and second, no further discussion, we have a roll call.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mrs. Scotta?
Yes.
Mr. Bieber?
Yes.
This is Michael?
No.
This is Stan Meter?
No.
Mr. Hadd?
Okay, that motion carries. Other discussion items, summer hours work schedule, and I believe Miss Kugler, you can comment on that.
In the past, we've done the four 10-hour days with savings. To add to the savings this year, we're going to go four 10-hour days, but this time we're going to need to go one week, Monday through Thursday for four 10-hour days, have Friday and following Monday on, excuse me, following Friday and following Monday, and then the next week will be Tuesday through Thursday. The schedule will be posted on this website, it will be posted on the front door. All offices will be open from seven to five, and there will be somebody in every office. So, um, we actually have four successive days where there will be no heating or cooling. Welcome, Mr. Whitaker.
Okay, and now the, uh, final item on the agenda is, uh, subpart B of the discussion items, the proposed budget presentation, I believe.
This is truly a presentation. This is not a discussion. I will be coming back at the end of the presentation to request that the board schedule work sessions, because my goal is that this budget will be public knowledge at all times, and they, you will all have input, every member of this board will have input into the reductions from here on out. We'll see what we've, as an administration, have already done, and you will see the deficit we started.
We'd like to pass the board that with all questions, comments, until we get to the work session, uh, to give everyone time to digest the information. Um, tonight really isn't the night, tonight is the night to learn about it. Uh, we'll, we'll dig into it at the workshop session, so let's hold our comments and questions.
I was actually moving through this fairly quickly, and I kind of wanted to show you the first thing where we stand right now, before we go to any more sessions and after a lot of.
Everyone here?
A mic wouldn't hurt.
And also where we are, sort of that we start.
Um, okay, kind of where we, where I start and, and where I end up and, and all the information that goes into it that I either present to administration or review for myself and obviously present to the board. One of the things that happens, the very first thing that we wait for typically happens in February, happened in March of this year, it's the governor's budget. And although, um, I follow it pretty closely, it was pretty significantly slanted toward education this year, almost too slanted, and nobody knows what to believe. And we'll just, I'll discuss further how it relates to what went into the budget. But for right now, what he was saying is he wanted to raise personal income tax, he wanted to have a sales tax hike, and also tax additional things. How, how does that affect school districts? What was he going to do with that money? Well, one of the things he was going to restore an accountability bond grant, he was going to restore a lot of, um, educational assistance programs, charter school reimbursement that we used to get years ago that we no longer get. For Fairfield, we spent in excess of $600,000 for kids in our district to go to charter schools. We pay the tuition at the charter school for those students. He was going to restore funding for dual enrollment, increase funding for career tech, and so on, increase special education funding, and then maintain funding at current levels, which is important, for transportation, food service, and safe school initiatives. So a lot was really going to happen for school districts if his budget would, would fly. In addition, like I told you, we pay for our kids who go to cyber charter schools. Right now, um, we pay $9,000 for a regular ed student and $17,000 for a special education student. His recommendation with his new budget was a flat 5950 for a regular education student and anywhere from 89, 85 up to 44,000, depending on the needs of a special ed student. So you can see significant savings for us there, um, or potential savings, again, if this budget that's really a bit extraordinary would come to pass. He also talks about pension funding and how he intended to bring that in line, and that we would eventually see a reduction in our employer contribution. Keep in mind that that, that's not something the district can control. We're told what we have to pay. For 1415 to 1516, the increase is 20.7%, and it's an additional 153,000 that we'll be paying next year than what we paid this year. That's net of reimbursement. We actually are going to pay about 300,000 more, but we'll get 150,000 back from the state. So what we'll see as an increase is 153,000, again, beyond our control. So what we'll see as an increase is $153,000. Again, beyond our control. There's other nuances. He's talking about some fund balance restrictions, dealing with the unassigned fund balance. He also wants to increase minimum wages from $725 to $1010. For us, that would only cost us about $975 in our general fund budget. And they also have established a basic education funding commission to look at the way basic ed subsidy is calculated across the board for every school district. Of course, it's gonna have strings. The districts are gonna require to submit a plan. They have to describe how they would use the funds. I can say that the way I've read it, most of the funds are, it's not like you have to actually spend the money on something that you haven't already been spending it on. You still have to have a plan in place, and the plan would have to be approved by June 15th. Keep in mind that our final budget approval, our board is required to approve this final budget by June 30th. And I'm not sure if we'll have a state budget by June 30th. So we may or may not know which portion of these revenues are ever gonna hit us before we're required to have our budget done. Property tax relief. We've all heard about that. He wants to reduce the average homeowner's property tax by 50%. There's a very long formula. Of course, all the districts in the state are different. Some are much wealthier, some are not so wealthy. So it affects those homeowners much differently. I can tell you that for Fairfield, it's about a 41% reduction in property taxes. So what they're assuming is for every resident, they should see about a 41% decrease. Again, if his budget as presented would go through. So all these things are sort of what we've been told, what could happen, what might happen. But we don't know for sure. And it's April 13th. So overall, everything I've just said, if his budget would go in, we would see $220,000 more in basic ed funding. We'd see about $35,000 more in special ed funding. We would see a $155,000 decrease in our charter school expense. And our property tax earners would get the much-needed 41% decrease in their property taxes. Right on the bill, they get in July. So overall, we would see about $411,000 in new money if this would go through. That being said, right now, the adjusted base index for us, which is, you know, is the maximum that we can raise the millage rate as it stands right now, is 2.3. What that would actually need to Fairfield is if we had a maximum millage increase, we would get about $183,000 in new revenue. And it would cost the average taxpayer $47. Right now, the 2015-2016 projected revenues are 16.3 million. Now, I have some slides that show those revenues. And they're a little busy, and it's late, and they're very detailed. So basically, I break it into three things, local, state, and federal. Local are all our taxes and grants that come through us through the state, but more through a local fashion. Real estate tax is just a slight bump that's strictly based on assessed values. And we have to use the number that comes to us from the latest and greatest from the county. Everything else I have either kept flat or what I anticipate receiving this year. Right now, the revenue piece of this budget, it's important to note, includes no new monies. I didn't put anything that the governor may or may not give us in here because I don't know if he's gonna give. So I've kept everything. If you look at the state taxes, the basic instructional subsidy, you'll see it's flat to what we had in the 1415 budget. Under supplemental grants down at the bottom, you'll see where it went from $194,000 to $65,000. That's a big drop. That's because we're actually not expecting to get $194 this year. So that's gonna be a loss this year and a loss going forward into next year. However, that's one of the grants the governor's talking about bumping back up to original levels. So we'll see. But right now, basically with revenues, I've kept everything flat to this year because I don't know what, I don't know what to put in there, and neither does anybody else at this point. So if we get that great news and we get it in a timely manner, it's a win-win. Hopefully for both the taxpayers and the school district. But I think they're pretty far apart at this point to bank that in. Right now, the 1516 projected expenditures are 16.8 million. So that's showing a projected deficit of $534,000. That's as we stand right now. And again, this is something that the board has been providing tonight. It looks at all of the expenditures in categories that are easy for most people to understand. You have your salaries. The next category is your benefits. I would point out down under 230, you can see where retirement goes in 1415 from $1.4 million to $1.8 million. Again, that's that Peasars that we talked about, the jump that's beyond our control. The next categories are professional and technical services. That's everything from special ed costs to legal to certain technology costs. I think it's interesting, though, when you look at the 1516 budget. And in many cases, it's lower than five or six years ago in many categories. So I think the district has worked very, 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 very hard where it can, where it's not mandated to make an expenditure to save money. The 500s, that is your transportation. That's the tuitions we spoke about, both for special ed students or for charter school students. And the next category are your supplies, natural gas, electricity. Again, I break them down as fine neatly as I can. And when we have our budget workshops, more detail will be given as to exactly what's in those categories and what's driving the variance, if there is a, if there is a significant variance. And then we have our equipment and our debt service. And debt service will come down a little bit more because we just sold the bonds this afternoon. And we now know that that savings is a little bit more than what I had originally hoped for and had put into these original numbers. And again, I know I'm going through this quickly and it's kind of a blur. But it's just an idea of the process, an idea of where we stand right now. Ms. Cooper gave a five-year plan. And there are many of those items that still are in this first pass of the budget, if you will. So I wanted to highlight those items that are in the budget as it stands right now and therefore incorporated into that deficit. Playground on the 20, carpet replacement, auditory and sound system lighting. These are the numbers, the amount that still remain in there now. And later on, I have a slide that kind of shows her five-year plan and which things were actually removed or bumped to year two. Because I think we have to always understand, all of these documents are right now fluid. They're changing as we get updates on information. They're changing as we have the sessions. They're changing as we get new quotes. So you might look at this two days from now, and I'll have a different number because maybe I got an update, or maybe I have good news, or maybe I don't have such good news. And we had some laptops and some servers. So the total capital expenditure, what I consider larger capital expenditures that are in this current budget are about $184,000. And I say that they're one-time items and not necessarily operational. And I put the word necessarily in there for a reason because while they're not operational day-to-day, they are things that every year, if it's not these couple of items, it's gonna be a different set of items. So we always need to make sure that we keep money in the budget for these types of things. This is just to kind of tie the whole thing back to Karen's five-year plan. And I know these are a little bit hard to read. They don't come up here well. But for example, she had AIDS up there, and I know this is near and dear to some. And I'm just saying what's in and what's out. And when we have budget discussions later on, it's something that we all can talk about. But that's not in the current budget right now, that increase for the AIDS. The one-to-one laptops for grades 11 and 12 were moved to year two. That's not the current numbers. Building ticket booths was moved to year two. That's not the current numbers. And I know this one's really hard to read. But flooring systems and painting, the truck and some laptop ceiling, they were all eliminated in this first pass. Building security, remember Ms. Cooper told you, we're pretty sure we can use grant funds in the current year to get those items. So that was really good news. And then we had some of technology. We had some mobile lab labs for the middle school and the elementary school. Originally one in 60, we reduced it to 30. So there are things that are changed, things that have been moved, and things that were just kind of eliminated to get to the first pass, to get to about a half a million dollar deficit. And I basically did that in there to show you how all those documents kind of tie together. And it makes it from one meeting to the next into the actual spending. I had a couple of questions at another meeting about the fund balance and where we thought we were gonna end up this year. In 1314, we ended up at 2.6 million. And the 1415 budget projected using about $624,000. So ultimately, in a perfect world, we were gonna end up with a fund balance of about $2 million at the end of this year. So to date of the appropriations, we had some cafeteria debt we were gonna absolve, some roof repair, chiller repair, parking lot ceiling, et cetera, on the left-hand side. And on the right-hand side, what we've actually done to date, cafeteria debt was about $153. The roof repair came in at $397. We did not need any extra funding for that. We haven't done the chiller repair yet. We haven't done the parking lot ceiling yet. We have done the circulating pumps. The money is still set aside for the playground. We just haven't expended it yet. And the huge conversion in the maintenance building we spent 15. So of the 7 and 11 that we anticipated spending, we have used by 79. So do I think the fund balance is gonna end pretty close to where we projected around the $2 million? Given some other overspending that we've had this year, probably pretty close. I do know we're favorable in a few line items in the taxes, but I also know that we're unfavorable in a few other ones relative to some state funding that just isn't coming through as promised. So, and I know everybody's working very hard on the spending. So hopefully, we won't be any lower than that. For the $2 million, we may, we may do a little better. This slide speaks to the millage because I know that's always a question aside from what's the cost of the average taxpayer. But I just looked back at 1213 to 1314. We had a slight increase in 1213. The revenue we got was $162. In 1314, it was $164. Both of those years, the adjusted index was 2.1. 1415, the adjusted index was 2.6. We didn't increase the mills. So basically, it's $208,000 that we didn't get last year. This year, the index is 2.3. That would get us about $183,000. We talked a little bit about debt. I know there were some questions and some comments about debt at prior meetings and concern about our overall debt level. And so I thought it was important to point out that, you know, after Standard and Poor did the analysis on the district, that they look at our particular district. And the household effective buying income is actually 124% of the national level. Our debt burden is considered moderate. And our carrying charges are considered moderate. And our debt amortization is average. And in this economy, I think words like moderate and average are very good, especially for a district this small. So I just want people to know that we're not out of line with the debt. We're not out of line with our restructure. And actually, by Standard and Poor's opinion, so I'll take all the good news I can get at this point. And as somebody said, we're not really gonna have any discussion tonight. We're gonna have a workshop at a later point. But, and I apologize, I went through that quickly. But at least to get to a start to thinking about where we are and what we really don't know.
Okay, as we said, we're not gonna discuss that tonight. But the workshop session will be open to the public. So I hope everyone can come, listen in when we have that. I think all we need to do now is look for a turn.
It was the opening day for the next.
Oh, yeah.
You see? Are you discussing when you're having this meeting?
I was just getting some whispers. Oh, now we can just type between emails and debate. He's recommending that we try and solve it here and then make sure we have the, then will be advertised.
Yeah, great. I can't do Thursdays. I can't do Thursday. So Wednesday, what happened to next Monday, the 20th? Oh, I can't hear. She returns 27. She won't be here for that board meeting.
I think it's, I think the budget.
Plus, she's gonna have jet lag.
Yeah, the budget, this is gonna be a pretty significant discussion. And I would rather have a night that we want to expect more than to do that, so.
Tuesday, the 20th.
Right, Tuesday, 20th.
We're gonna start at the actual budget.
Caroline said she would be posting. She will this week, she said.
Yeah, I prefer early.
Yeah, it might be made away. Okay, good, I'll say so.
So the, so the meeting will be, they will find first at 6:00 P.M.
And you'll post that on the website. Great. All right, now do I have a motion for adjournment?
I did.
Got it? All is in favor? I'll be all right for the station.